Everybody get into the chair. Get it? All the board members get into the chair. You don't need that, that's just stand up.
Well, I think you may be on the year. That may be leftovers from the fifth. No, because these are all the, all the day.
You two are gonna... We have a voting block over there. They're gonna be a lot of fun. I think we're a little, a little person.
Yeah, we need eleven. They can give me back to the town. That's the one I could try to... We, first one we didn't have warrants. Second time it was an agenda. The third time, um, we take it to the end of the year because we wanted to see how much money we have. So, um, that's the one. They came, they come twice.
It's hard for me to do things this far. I can't, oh, don't worry.
I can't.
None of us read his shit.
I can't, I can't get this in here.
Can you tell me where the item is for a hundred and twenty hours for a voting?
Database.
Oh, I see it. I got it. Thank you. I think we have to inform, inform the...
Okay, actually what I'll look at is the one that's May on the other side. If you have it already. So the top says May 31st. Does that incorporate stuff? From my understanding, so they're... It's still four thirty. From during May.
Third, fourth.
On this thing. We're not voting on any of it. It's just for a community purpose. I just passed it out. What are we looking at on the May one? It's like somewhere.
Leftover from past. Do we have a role? Of what was left over?
An extension.
Can I imagine where else she would be? Because it's, it's generally... No?
Well, he asked about twenty fifteen. So those ones missing are May, August. And maybe they didn't have these. I don't know. Did you ever skip a month or something?
We skipped a month, yes.
So, um, May and August. And December.
And then so far this year.
Just two months. January and April. Yeah, a little bit, but I did. He's like before March.
Okay.
So basically, basically, we're still...
They got the big concert in center. Time to turn on and lights up. Where, where you look, where gas stations. Where you got, where you show your ball, gas stations. The charge of that street is huge. And on top of that, they, they store. The test is, is still going, it's been out, it's dry. It's eight. And the... Yeah. And, and it's, it's a, we already, we're called. Yeah.
The X is a, these things. If I now, neighborly places for shelter.
Okay.
So, why is there any to figure out? With everybody else? Of this, these items here. Simple.
Yeah, no, that's fine. That's fine. That's just the, yeah.
Getting stars are, is, are people. There's stickers, there's businesses. Or their logo. This is, uh, what's that? Some vertical banner. Which would scatter these worlds.
But isn't that the three hundred dollars that went to, uh...
Hey, George, Dave Bube. Question meeting. One more question.
I always say...
Give me a read back.
Like I said, these are, this is just one of the bar. So, if somebody can bring some attention, we actually pay for those things and ask that much less. So we have to.
Okay.
Take care of it. You know what?
I don't think so. You know, that's why.
Once you had a plan for it, and now it's... Typically, isn't it that, that next year? It's kind of scary. Seventy percent.
Oh, I know. It used to be, it used to be pretty easy. Not anymore. Come on, send in the four row. All right, save by the candle.
Sorry, I didn't have a chance to go over your check.
I didn't do it, right?
Yeah, usually. I've gotten a lot of it in twenty years.
All right, we're gonna call a meeting to order. Thank you, everyone. This is a special meeting. Granada Hills South Neighborhood Council. Uh, the time is, uh, about six sixteen. And, uh, we have a few items on the agenda. We are going to start with a roll call by our secretary, Julie Carson. Julie?
May Jerry Askew.
He is excused.
Dave Bube.
I'm here.
Michael Benedetto.
Here.
Jeffrey Dorff.
Here.
Bonnie Burst.
Here.
Me. Julie Carson here. Jeff.
Jeff Dunlap is excused.
Don Graham. Sally Colston.
Here.
Don Lopez.
Here.
Darren Lopez.
Here.
Joe Wild.
Not heard from Joe.
Anthony Matthews.
Not heard from Anthony.
Mark Morris.
Here.
Brandon Schindlerheim.
Here.
Renee Trinidad.
Excused.
Andrew Wall.
Excused.
Cindy Freeman Freeman.
Not heard from her.
Is that an email she's sending?
Okay, good. Thank you. Eleven means we have a quorum. So, thank you all very much. Uh, we are going to move to the next item, which is public comment. Ms. Kuzman, come forward, please. Before Ms. Kuzman speaks, is there anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Sorry. You have two minutes, Ms. Kuzman.
Hi, everyone. Uh, the first thing I want to do is I really want to thank you for getting the notice out for this meeting last Friday. It was really great to be able to plan for a week in advance. That's absolutely fabulous. The other thing that I do want to mention is, uh, the items being voted on tonight are monetary items. And I know there were a lot of new board members appointed and/or seated. So, uh, just as a matter of housekeeping, it needs to be clarified that all the new board members that are voting tonight have completed their ethics training and their funding training because it really hasn't been that long. And I just want to make sure that that gets looked at. In addition to that, all, uh, new board members should be verified as having signed the Code Conda form sent out by the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. And that's all I, oh, I have one other last announcement, and it's kind of personal, big news. I passed my real estate broker's exam yesterday.
Run me your purse.
All right, we will ask that question before we go into, into the items. We are gonna go directly into the board issues, which all deal with outreach. First of all, I'm gonna just ask, uh, for a show of hands, I'm not gonna ask you to, everyone individually. Has everyone taken their, their ethics training? Let's start with that. Show of hands. Okay? Pardon me? It doesn't matter what you remember the date. Ethics training is a one-time thing. No, no, I'm sorry. Ethics training is...
Two years.
Code of Conduct's a one-time thing. Ethics training you should be doing every two years. Okay. Yes, sir? Okay, so everyone, you know, I'm not sure your current...
I can't remember.
Okay.
Get to see them. If, in parallel, it was really slow at hosting the current ethics training.
Well, you, you know a few better than you can't remember.
I've got a certificate. Anybody wants to...
And funding training, everyone has taken that? That's a one-time thing. And Code of Conduct, everyone has taken that? One-time thing. Okay. So. Fun, I just announced that, yeah. Okay, so, we have five motions tonight, all financial, all, uh, attached to the outreach committee. And let me just explain in general terms what we're doing. And, and make it a little easier for those that may not understand it or have some questions. We had, uh, the previous board had an encumbrance of five thousand dollars for a newsletter. Uh, newsletter never went out. So we need to unencumber those funds and return them to general outreach. We had a motion to, uh, every year we have, uh, functions and projects and, and things that we support that don't, we don't always spend the money that, uh, we have allotted. So those things formally need to be, for instance, if we were gonna spend five hundred dollars on, uh, outreach event for the Halloween night at the park, where we only spent four hundred and seventy dollars. We need to unencumber that last thirty dollars, return it to general outreach. We have a whole list of those things. It just simply need to be unencumbered and then returned, and returned to the general fund, outreach fund. Uh, C, uh, Michael's put together a motion to purchase supplies, equipment, and outreach, mostly outreach giveaway items. And he will talk about that, and we have those, that list. Did that list go out with the... Okay, so everyone should have that list and, and have been able to peruse that already. Uh, I am going to allow about ten minutes for questions and answers on that list if we need it. What, what I don't really expect to hear is a lot of questions about, why do we need four hundred followers and not five hundred followers? Or, you know, three, three hundred dollars for balloons and not six hundred? The outreach committees discuss this, add into an item, and come up with this. The whole idea is, once the committee is, you know, has, has put this together, we gotta have the confidence that they, they properly give the diligence to the items. If you have a question, however, about a specific item, raise it. We'll, we'll put aside ten minutes for discussion on that when we get to that motion. Uh, motion to approve two neighborhood purpose grants. One in the amount of two thousand dollars for the robotics team. Uh, and the second is a motion to approve the neighborhood purpose grant for Friends of the Library, motion of a thousand. However, we may want to amend that, and I'll explain that, uh, when we get to it. But just briefly, it, it appears that the district, the city attorney is not going to approve the previous motion for fifteen hundred dollars for the first NPG, for the Friends of the Library because the minutes did not reflect that Mr. Matthews disclosed that he was a member. Uh, Mr. Matthews says he did, but however, the district attorney is not satisfied that the minutes as approved properly reflect that. So, one way we can, can fix that is to amend the one thousand dollar motion to twenty five hundred dollars when we get to that, that motion. Contingent on the city attorney's rule.
Okay. You said district attorney first. Now you changed to city attorney. Okay.
Yes, if, if we stayed a thousand dollars, then we would eat that, if that fifteen hundred is, that, that would be swept back. Okay, so that's the five motions. Let us start with motion A, which is to unencumber five thousand for the newsletter and reallocate those funds to the general outreach. Do I, now? Motion is made by Mr. Graham, seconded by Mr. Boer. And let the record reflect, Mr. Matthews is here. He was twelve. Anthony, would you sit up in the first row and make it easier?
Sorry, it started at six.
Pardon me?
The meeting started at six.
Six fifteen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Six seventy next. Okay. I just left you a message, so. I like your haircut, by the way.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we are right on the first motion. Your timing is impeccable. Bonnie, would you grab a, a agenda for Anthony? So he doesn't have to get back on the, well, it's almost starting to hurt. No, you're good. Okay, so, motion has been made by Mr. Graham, seconded by Mr. Boer, uh, to unencumber the five thousand. Anyone speaking in favor, take that first. Anyone opposed, speak. All right, signal discussion, we'll vote on this. All those who think we're gonna do a roll call vote.
I am, because I have to know how everybody votes, right?
Make it easier than just raising our voices.
Make it easier.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, you're gonna take public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, let the record reflect that Cindy Wu is here. Cindy, would you sit up by, well, probably easier to sit over here by Mark. Uh, yes, but, uh, I'm gonna take public comment, but I'm gonna take public comment on all five items at once. Mr. Kuzman?
I would prefer that you take them individually because I only wanna speak, I only wanna speak to one or two, and I don't think...
Ms. Kuzman, could you speak up? I can't hear you.
I said I would like to speak to one or two of them, not all of them at once, and only have ten seconds or twenty seconds to speak to each one.
How many do you intend to speak on?
One or two.
One or two, all right. I'll allow public comment on each one. Uh, and we'll start with that. You have public comment on the five thousand?
No, I do not. That's an unencumbered.
Comment on this. You don't have Jerry here, correct? Someone, anyone else with public comment? Mr. Obama?
Yeah, I don't know if I have a public comment on the five thousand, other than the fact that I'd like to see it allocated somewhere.
Well, that's not, that's not germane, and when we get to, when we get to, uh, Mike's report, there is some money that we're gonna reallocate for, for newsletters. And reallocate to the general outreach fund. Okay. All right, I don't see any other discussion. We're gonna vote on this. Julie, please take a roll call vote.
Okay, so Jerry Askew, absent. Dave Bube.
Aye.
Michael Benedetto.
Aye.
Jeffrey Dorff.
Aye.
Bonnie Burst.
Aye.
Julie Carson.
Aye.
Jeff Dunlap, absent. Don Graham.
Aye.
Sally Colston.
Aye.
Don Lopez.
Aye.
Darren Lopez.
Aye.
Joe Wild, absent. Anthony Matthews.
Aye.
Mark Morris.
Aye.
Brandon Schindlerheim.
Yes.
North Anger Trinidad, absent. Andrew Wall, absent, and Cindy Freeman, absent.
All right, thank you. The motion passes. And, and I, Julie, for future, I don't think you have to call the people who are absent.
Okay.
Just those that are...
Just know of them.
Just know of them, yeah. Okay, the next motion is to unencumber some outreach items, such as leftover funds from past events, and reallocate those funds to general outreach. I'm gonna let Brandon comment on this to start before, well, let's have a motion portion. Motion made by, by Don Graham, seconded by Mark Morris. And I'm gonna turn it over to Brandon just to explain which items he's...
Well, um, I need actually probably something over there's input, but I can't read all of them because, uh, I guess this one's too small.
Well, I made some, I made some notes, and I can tell you that we can unencumber the hundred and twenty dollars for the drawn new database.
I can do a second, just read all of them for you, and then you can, then we can probably...
I, I think I got them.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, well, let's, let's do this one. Have Brandon read them, if there's any corrections or additions, and make them, have a reason. All right? Okay, so go ahead, Brandon, just read them off.
Okay, so, there was, uh, fortunately, five hundred dollars for business cards that I haven't seen the bill, I haven't seen it being deducted. It was actually encumbered from prior fiscal year, so I think we need to keep that on there, and maybe at some point they're gonna charge us.
Okay.
I don't know.
Did we get business cards for the last four?
I think we did.
You did?
This was, remember, this was from fiscal year two thousand.
Okay, so should we, we should not unencumber that?
I don't think so. I don't know.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, the Granada Hills South Neighborhood Council Business Window Stickers, it's up, uh, three hundred and fifty dollars. I don't know what the status is on that.
Do we, do we need to, do we need to keep those funds alive? Okay.
Oh, but we, we're gonna pay, we're gonna spend it before, in the next month. That's the concern. We need to make sure.
Right. If we're not gonna spend it in the next month, no public comment yet.
Brandon?
All right, we just had a question.
No public comment yet, our questions. Let, let him go through this.
What was that item?
So, it's the second one, the stickers. So, so far we're keeping both of those.
Okay, well, don't worry about it. We, we, we'll just worry about whether we're gonna encumber or not, and then cover.
And then there were two, uh, we're supposed to get two roll-up vertical Granada Hills banners. I don't know what the status is on that.
Renee's not here, but, uh, believe is gonna supply us with the mentors.
So we should not unencumber those items? Okay. All right, so, so far we got three items, and we will not unencumber any of those.
We're five to four, and we're, we're unencumbering one. Well, we have, we, we went on, the database is out of order, so the database broke. Um, we don't need that for a minute. Okay, um, the, I guess, two hundred dollars was allocated for the Port Ranch gas and outreach.
We can unencumber that, that we can do after our spot through Mr. Simmons will, uh, the motion, the bill, rather, to change the two-year statute of limitations of four, it's not passed.
Did you guys speak up? It's kinda hard for us to hear you.
And the other bills, uh, are somewhat premature, so they're still coming up. And the other bills are somewhat premature, so they're still coming up. So, we can use next year's fund to put that event together.
Okay, so we'll unencumber that because it's not necessary?
Right.
Then there's $140 left for our tote bags. All right, we unencumbered that, so it's not so specific?
Yes.
We did already buy a bunch of tote bags, $1,806 worth, so we've got plenty of tote bags right there. Polo shirts for $340 that we, for more outreach about, for the board members to wear.
Yeah, we're going to keep them.
And who's in charge of that one? Next is the rent stabilization seminar that we had. There's $350 left.
I was going towards the video, so some of these are pretty.
That, so, all those videos were from Brad? I don't, is it marketing, when you say, did Marco better? Video guides, I don't market.
No, no. So, so I submitted, like, immediately after the event, there was an invoice from Columbia, that was sent to Brandon and Brad, so I guess Brad has to pay for it.
Yeah, okay, I had you that, I had that question, was that $350? Okay.
So, we should not unencumber-
Do not unencumber it. So, we say Brad's. I'll, I'll apply. So, $368.85 left for the survey and trifle brochure. I suppose that's done.
Yeah, we made a purchase.
So, we should unencumber that?
The remaining amount.
I'm sorry, the remaining is how much? We can unencumber that.
Wait, the survey brochure?
Yeah.
Or what's the one that you have?
It says $500.
No, oh, you need to look at the May, look at the May, the second page. There it is. Sorry, everybody.
That's all right.
Make sure everyone's looking at the top, it says May 31st. There's two more items to discuss. There's $1,737.44 left for general neighborhood council promotional items. So, we can keep that, because that's where we want to put whatever remains, so we're going to keep that. But that's Mike to spend. And the last thing is, I never got an invoice, never, the money was not automatically deducted like they had done in the past. This $500 was for, again, last fiscal year, even 27 for budget day. So, I don't know, I don't want to unencumber it, and then it-
Yeah, we should. Cindy, you want to speak today?
Yeah, so budget day is going to happen this year, so can we have that money in our force that?
Well, is it still scheduled for June 27?
This is the last year.
It's last year, you can't use it for the next one.
Oh, well, we definitely need to unencumber that, if we, we've not got an invoice for it in a year.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Brandon, do we, we're going to leave on the list the rent stick, no, I'm sorry, promotional item?
Yes.
All right, so, just to review, would we go back and just review, just, just again, what we are going to unencumber?
Yes, so there's five items. First item is $120 for the database growth, $200 for the Porter Ranch gas leak outreach, $140 for the remaining amount of tote bags, or, you know, outreach tote bag. Fourth item is $368.85 for the neighborhood council survey and trifle brochure. And the fifth item is the budget day $500, for this was for June 27, 2015.
And the polo shirts were-
Keeping them.
They're keeping them. So, I'll amend my original motion to un, to unencumber those particular items.
All right. Seconded by Mr. Lopez. All right, now we will open this up for public comment. Mr. Mansker, do you have your hand up for a question?
Yeah, my hand was up, because I couldn't hear what people were saying.
Thank you. If you would, did you add it up?
Yeah, it's $1,328.85.
Okay. So, any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll have a board discussion on the motion, starting with anyone opposed to this. Anyone wants to speak in favor of uncovering these funds? All right, hearing no discussion, I think we're ready to vote on-
I have a question.
Yes, Cindy?
So, just wondering for the $500 for the budget day, even though that was for last year, could we still send that in for last year?
Why would we do that if they didn't invoice us? I mean, if, if the city, if, if Dunn wanted to invoice us for it, then they should have done it for them last year. You know?
We're getting, yeah, it's literally in your home.
Yeah, that's, that's unacceptable, if they didn't invoice us to invoice. All right, so, I don't hear any other discussion. Let's vote on this, and again, we'll do a roll call vote.
I have one clarification, so was there an amended motion?
There's an amended motion by, by Mr. Graham, seconded by Mr. Lopez, that we unencumber those five items-
Okay.
For total amount of, Brandon?
$1,328.
Got it? Okay, roll call vote.
Okay, Dave Voege.
Aye.
Michael Benedetto.
Aye.
Jeffrey Gore.
Aye.
Bonnie Burst.
Aye.
Julie Carson, yes. Jett Dunlap. Don Graham.
Aye.
Sally Kohlstadt.
Yes.
Don Lopez.
Aye.
Darren Lopez.
Aye.
Anthony Matthews.
Aye.
Mark Morris.
Aye.
Brandon Schindlerheim.
Aye.
Cindy, yes.
Okay, so I hear that's unanimous, motion passes. All right, so let's go to the third item, which is C, motion to purchase supplies, equipment, and outreach giveaways, items up to $10,000 from general outreach funds. Now, before, let's have a, let's have a motion and a second first. Motion by Mr. Lopez, seconded by Mr. Matthews. This is, I wrote it specifically as up to $10,000, because I wasn't sure which items were going to be encumbered, left encumbered, which ones were going to be left unencumbered. So, Brandon, could you give us a, at least a rough idea of what we have at this point in general outreach?
So, if you include, before we had the prior two motions, there was $4,616.12 just for outreach. You can see, there's a couple, there's a couple deficits in the website, general outreach itself is $121 deficit. But all in all, there's $4,616.12, plus another thousand above, just for the outreach committee.
How much was that?
Another thousand. So, I would-
Take your time.
I'm going to, I'm going to- Do you want to work on it a couple of minutes while we just pass this? Um, well, it's kind of related to the next item.
It is related to the next item, so we, we need to have at least a pretty solid idea of what our general outreach with all these unencumbered funds is.
The neighborhood purpose grants, we're planning on-
Well, don't worry about those.
Okay, so, so we have, so it's $11,944.97.
In general outreach total.
In general outreach, including-
Can I bring in $11,000?
Okay, so, keeping that number in mind, I'm going to ask Michael to tell us what his recommendation here is for the general outreach items, that he's, and promotional items that he's proposing. Go ahead.
So, if you ever come to any of our events, the fair, Easter egg hunt, the festivals, street fair, et cetera, et cetera, I have to say in all honesty, it's kind of boring. And the, the people who come to our booth think it's kind of boring too, because a lot of people pass us up for the things that look attractive. So, in order to make it interesting, the outreach committee came up with the idea of making it more of a carnival kind of atmosphere. So, we were thinking about purchasing a wheel, so that we can spin things around, and although you, you win no matter what, we're going to give away different gifts and different prizes. Now, we have some more expensive gifts that we have less quantity of, but what this allows us to do is to erase it, even if it's on the spot, we're giving away too many of the expensive gifts, and put in some, substitute something else which we have more of. So, it allows us to play with it, so to speak. And then, of course, the items that we, we have in mind to give away and to draw these people to look over to what we're doing is the pot holders, the caps, the shirts, lunch coolers, flash drives for the computer at eight megabytes, screwdriver, key lights, emergency kits, which I think a lot of people are just looking at that, balloons, where, I mean, right now, the people who man the booths say, "Hi, little girl, hi, little boy, what color would you like, green or green?" We've got to get some multitude of those people, and brighten our thing up. I know, but-
Keep going, we've got 15 minutes.
So, in, in learning by experience, we probably need an additional helium tank and some additional helium to, because we run out. We gave away, you know, in excess of 200, you know, in excess of 200 balloons. We're going to, now, we've lost the banner that goes on our canopy, and it sags anywhere, we don't, we, nobody knows what happened to it. So, we're going to silver screen the logo and Grand Hill Southyover Council right onto the thing. The, to put the, just cheap plastic or something that falls short on the tables that we're trying to outreach, it's not very classy at all, so what we're going to try and do is actually get a, a tablecloth that hangs over the front and has our logo and whatnot on it too. Looks impressive, we've seen it at the events, and it looks pretty good. Okay. And then, people are constantly, constantly asking us, do they live in the area? Do they, they live in our boundaries, the stakeholders? So, we're going to get a large mat, basically, along with the stand. I've seen it at a couple, I've seen it at the disaster fair. Looks pretty sharp, looks classy, makes us look good. Movie night, we didn't have one last year, time we had one. So, and again, the wheel, the newsletter, and the travel mug.
Explain about the newsletter, because it, it's not $5,000.
Right.
Explain your plan.
So, the, the plan is that when I went to District Two and consulted with other neighborhood councils, we, we know one neighborhood council put out $10,000 and got 50 responses back. I think that way of doing things is just not correct anymore. I talked to Melvin, and it's perfectly okay if we don't mail it and pay for the postage and that much printing, as long as we, we put out a newsletter. So, the way to do that, I believe, would be to deliver some here. They're at IHOPs, they're at Denny's, the library, the chamber, et cetera, et cetera, all of our events, and we, we can do a lot more for a lot less.
And also on the website, in an electronic version.
Right. Taco night on Fridays, for sure.
All right, so that is, that is the proposal from outreach, and what's the total?
Well, that came to $9,861.25.
Which is less than $11,000.
Nine, eight, six, one, and 25 cents.
Okay, so that's the proposal out of the $11,000 that we have left. I'll open it up for discussion, starting with in favor of. I'm sorry, public comment. Thank you, Cindy. Mr. Mansker?
Uh, yeah, you know, we've been doing these item giveaways ever since Neighborhood Council first started, and we're not the only ones. But I have yet to have anyone tell me if, how are those items really impacting the public to come to our meetings, to make them aware of us, or anything? Yeah, you give away stuff, people always take stuff, even stuff they don't really need, just to have it. We've seen that at the fair, people come around and they collect, collect, and they don't even, in the area, but they'll collect everything there is. So, how are we judging that the money we're spending on these giveaway items, how are they, I, I haven't seen any, any, any comeback to us. Place is still pretty empty, the people who show up here are the people who always show up here. I'm not seeing any new faces. So, I mean, are, are, should we be looking harder at how we're spending our money? And I realize that this late date, we need to spend this money, so maybe this is okay, but going forward, we really have to have a serious conversation as to, is it effective? And right now, I, I'm not seeing it being effective.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment? Public comment, Mr. O'Bara?
Um, Michael, it's very nice to see that you're going to update the booth, because the booth is a disaster, the last time I saw it at the street fair. And I actually took a photograph, and I may mention it to you, and you did respond to that. So, I think it's very important, you might want to get rid of some of those items and go to more stand-up graphical imagery to accompany the booth itself. Because I think for people to first want to come over to get your, your products, they have to be visually enticed to come. And, and I like the wheel, but I think there's more graphical elements that need to accompany your booth.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, hearing none, on the motion, board discussion, first in favor, Bonnie?
I really like the item of wheels, because I did an event where we were doing all these things, and people just can't graph under it. I think with the wheel, first of all, you're looking at how many things they can just sort of graph, that won't be able to, exactly, we can make it sign up on an email list as a condition for spinning the wheel, and if the items are something they want, they will do that, and then we have accomplished outreach, because now we have a bigger email list. And I think we should email our newsletters, and I think a lot of what our responsibility is is for, you know, email before not. So, if we do a newsletter that we can stick on websites and email to people and say, "These are things that are coming up, these are events, these are issues," that's what outreach is.
All right, anyone opposed? Anyone in opposition? I'll take one more in favor of. Cindy, have your hand up first.
I just have a quick question. I just wanted to know how much is the wheel?
About 85 plus tax?
85 dollars?
Yeah. Brandon?
I just wanted to explain that, so, which was, which, which, Jeff and I were talking about. So, by taking that amount plus what we have remaining, is a little over $2,000 left in general outreach, which we could use for the next neighborhood purpose grant that passed. And there's still $1,550 left in neighborhood purpose grants that we can use for the friends of Grand Hill Library. So, there's enough.
There's enough. Even? Okay, good. All right, so, I'm going to call for a vote on this, roll call. Julie?
Dave Voege.
Aye.
Michael Benedetto.
Aye.
Jeffrey Gore.
Staying.
Bonnie Burst.
I'm going to stay, just in case I have to add that.
Julie Carson, yes. Don Graham.
Aye.
Sally Kohlstadt.
Aye.
Don Lopez.
Aye.
Darren Lopez.
Aye.
Anthony Matthews.
Aye.
Mark Morris.
Aye.
Brandon. Brandon Schindelheim?
Aye.
Cindy Wubree, yes?
I just count that as a love and eyes and two abstentions. Is that correct, Julie? Alright, motion, motion passes.
Mr. Cruzman?
Yes, sir.
Can I make a motion to two items that were brought up by public comment? Do you refer to outreach in the discussion of this issue, both the graphic design?
Yes.
And?
Bonnie, folks?
Some sort of metric to determine success or relative success of that?
I, we're not gonna take board comments at the end of this meeting, but I think we can bring those up at the next meeting, June second.
I submit that then as a motion.
Yeah, okay. I don't think we need a motion on that. But let's bring it up at the next meeting and make that suggestion in the next meeting. Okay, so, two more motions, one, they're both for neighborhood purpose grants. The first is item B, and it's a motion to approve neighborhood purpose grant in the amount of $2,000 for Valley Academy Marks and Sciences. Purpose of the grant is to provide material support for the school's robotics teams. Do we have a motion? Ms. Colstad, you're gonna make the motion. Sarah Second, seconded by Mr. Morris. Any public comment on this? Mr. Kuzman?
Okay, who made it?
Uh, Sally and Mark.
Hi, everyone.
Bonnie, have a seat, folks. We're just finishing up the meeting.
You know, we've given a lot of money to the Academy of the Arts Robotics Team in the past. This would be the third time we would be making a donation for this group. Not that they're not doing a great thing, but I just wanna caution the board that they may need to refer this item back to a city or somebody to research it because evidently there is a problem nowadays with neighborhood councils giving money to any kind of school that might have a connection with the LAUSD. I'm not sure if there's a connection there or not, but these are one of the things that have come up. And also, just, you know, FYI, I've heard a statement requiring somebody to do something to spin the wheel that would be a violation of the Brown Act. Neighborhood council cannot require a stakeholder's signature and email address to participate in any function.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzman. Any other public comment? Mr. Mansker, please, please keep it simple.
Yeah, remember, neighborhood purpose grants are a form of outreach. It's pro-pro. If we give someone something, we're supposed to get something back. That means recognition for the board as part of our outreach. If we just give them something and they don't give us anything back, then you haven't accomplished anything. You have an outreach. You failed it.
I think that if you heard the report from the last donation we made to Granada Hills High School, they gave us a lot of recognition at the event. So, we would ask for the same from...
You're absolutely right, but a lot of times, we have given neighborhood purpose grants, and we got nothing in return, other than saying thank you to us, and nobody heard it other than those people who got the grant.
Okay, any other public comment? Alright, hearing none of public comment, board discussion, starting with those in favor. Mr. Schindelheim, in favor?
Yeah, I think it's a great opportunity, especially because there isn't a whole lot of money for those types of specific locations. And technology is very important, which is dangerous, and I think it's a great way to be taught.
Thank you. Anybody opposed? Okay, one more in favor, if you like. Otherwise, we're ready for a vote.
Yeah, just real quick.
Go ahead.
I've talked at length with Sally, and she is gonna get back to those people who are in charge of these things. And what I would like to see is that during assembly, for instance, robotics or whatnot, that we actually get to bring members of the board to tell the entire audience, maybe 2,000, 3,000 people, who we are, and that it is our pleasure to make this grant to the people.
Okay, we're ready for a vote. Anybody else gonna speak opposed? Okay, I don't hear anyone. We're ready for a vote. Julie, roll call, please.
Okay, Dave Buvey?
Aye.
Mike, I'm standing.
Aye.
Bonnie Burst? Julie Carson, aye. Don Graham?
Aye.
Sally Colstad?
Aye.
Don Lopez?
Aye.
Darren Lopez?
Aye.
Anthony Matthews?
Aye.
Mark Morris?
Aye.
Brandon Schindelheim?
Alright, anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?
Yeah, I have one abstaining.
Who was staying?
Uh, Bonnie.
Okay. Alright, motion carries in, 12 to 1, 12 to 1 abstentions. Alright, thank you, everyone. Last motion is to approve a neighborhood purpose grant for Friends of the Library in the amount of $1,000. Purpose of the grant is to purchase additional books and education materials for the Granada Hills Library. Uh, let's have the motion, and if we want to amend it, you can do that. Your motion? Motion for a thousand, seconded by Sally Colstad, seconded by Mark Morris. Okay, so, public comment. Mr. Kuzman?
The first question I have is on the $1,000, usually the Friends of the Library or after. A little bit more than that, so...
Original motion was for $3,000.
What I'm getting to is, I have not seen a copy of this request yet because it's not on our website anywhere. But what I would encourage the board, if there is any more money than the $1,000, to consider amending it to give them whatever you can because I think this is one of the greatest things that our community has and does and provides for our children in education, and we all know we need education.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Alright, so, we have a motion for a thousand. Mr. Schindelheim mentioned that we can take from general outreach and add to this, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
I'll probably make my statement.
Well, I already did it for you.
No, I go ahead.
Yes, you do, yeah. Do that now, please.
I wish to be clear, I'm a member of the Friends of the Library, P. L. C. A., and I am not on the board.
Please put that in there.
Please reflect it in the minutes.
Alright, so, and just so the city attorney, I would also suggest, even though you're not on the board, you recuse on this section. Anything? They don't have to leave it. Just recuse your vote. They have to actually leave it?
Yeah.
Well, you... Yeah, why don't you do that, just so that the city attorney doesn't get us on the second flight here? Alright, so, let the record reflect that Mr. Mansker's gonna refuse on this vote, ending the row. Alright, so, I will accept an amendment to the $1,000 of up to... What do we have? Alright, well, except that the city attorney's indicated that they're not gonna allow the original $1,500.
Okay, then.
My suggestion would be we amend it upwards to $2,500, contingent on the city attorney disapproving the first, the first $1,500.
I second.
Alright, so, you're making that motion?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm gonna restate the motion. The motion is that we amend the $1,000 to $2,500, contingent on the city attorney's disapproval of the original $1,500 request for neighborhood purpose grant, which they've already indicated they're disapproving. Disapproval.
Of what?
Of the original MPG from last year's... Alright, everyone understand that motion? Any, all our questions are there? Okay, no need public comments, we already have the... Board comment? Yes, please.
So, just wondering, how much money, let's just say if they accept the $1,500, there's how much money do we have left over for MPG?
That would wipe out our MPG question. Any, anybody speaking in favor?
Not in favor, not against that question.
Okay.
As Mr. Mansker pointed out, and Mr. Kuzman, kinda half and half. You know, we've given money to the Friends of the Library almost every year. I'd kinda like to know a little bit more about what we're getting in return from the library.
Sally, you wanna respond to that?
Pamela was here about six or seven months ago?
I remember.
With a plaque that she does put in the library. Okay, and she keeps it in the library. I believe it says that money has been donated by the neighborhood council to the library, so, I mean, but, I mean, all these funds go to the library and videotapes into the kids. So, is that what you're...
However, that was for past.
What do we get back? I mean, we...
We get recognition.
We get recognition for donating money to the library.
Okay, alright. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we're ready for a roll call vote. All those, Julie, roll call, please.
Yeah, Dave?
This is on the amended motion of $2,500. Aye.
Michael Benedetto?
Aye.
Jeffrey Gore?
Staying.
Bonnie Burst? Julie Carson, aye. Don Graham?
Aye.
Sally Colstad?
Aye.
Don Lopez?
Yes.
Darren Lopez?
Aye.
And, Mark Morris?
Aye.
Brandon Schindelheim?
Aye.
And Cindy Wubree?
Aye.
I hear that adds 10 ayes, one abstent, no, 11 ayes, one abstent?
Two abstentions.
10 ayes, one abstention?
Two abstentions.
Two abstentions.
Okay, 10, 2, and 1. Is that right?
Uh, yeah, we recuse, yes.
Okay, so the motion passes. I wanna thank everyone. Thank you, over in Granada Hills folks, for your patience. We're done. Accept motion to adjourn, which I will entertain now. We have motion to adjourn. Don Lopez, your first motion, Don.
Thank you.
That's true, okay. The motion is amended then. You're right, thank you very much, Cindy. We have to vote on the main motion as amended then. All those in favor, well, roll call vote. Start with me. Aye.
Wait, what are we voting on?
Just on the main, motion is amended.
It's all I see, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, Dave?
Aye.
Michael Benedetto?
Aye.
And... Jeffrey Gore?
Staying.
Bonnie Burst?
Staying.
Julie Carson, aye. Don Graham?
Gentlemen, please.
Sally Colstad?
Aye.
Don Lopez?
She can hear that.
Darren Lopez?
Aye.
Mark Morris?
Aye.
Brandon Schindelheim?
Aye.
Cindy Wubree?
Aye.
Did I hear the same vote then?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Don Lopez, your first motion? Seconded by Mike Benedetto. All those in favor can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone wanna stick around? You are all invited to stick around for the over in Granada Hills Wisdom School meeting, which will start almost immediately after this meeting. Thank you all. We'll see you on June 2nd at our next regular meeting.